Good afternoon. And welcome to the meeting of the Beaumont City Council. Today is Tuesday, July the 19th, 2022. Today, given our invocation, is my pastor, Pastor Edison Colbert of Paradise Missionary Baptist Church. Pastor, if you would please come forward. Also, I will ask if everyone will please silence their cell phones. And I will give you a few seconds to do that. While checking your phones, I would like to recognize Mayor Ames in the audience. Thank you for being here today. And at this time, if you so choose, please stand for our prayer and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Shall we bow our heads? Most gracious and heavenly God, our Father, Lord, once again, you've allowed us to assemble ourselves together to come, oh God, and to take care of the business of this city. God, we thank you right now for this opportunity, for it's a day that we've never seen before and a day, oh God, that we'll never see again. And Lord, we thank you, for we intend to make the best of it, God. Lord, we thank you now. We acknowledge, Father, that you have all power in heaven and in earth. And, oh God, there is nothing that's too hard for thee. We know and we thank you, God, for all that you've done. And before we ask one single thing of you, we want to say thank you. Thank you, God, for bringing our city, for bringing our people together in a time, oh God, when things are so unsettled. But we thank you because we find peace, oh God, in you. And, God, we look to the hills, oh God, which come with our help, and we thank you right now. But, God, we lift up our city leaders to you right now. We lift our council up to you. We thank you, God, for their wisdom, their knowledge, oh God, and their wanting to do things for the church, for the city, that would make this city a better place to live. We thank you for their efforts. We thank you, God, for all they've done. We especially thank you for our mayor and her leadership, God. We thank you for each and every member, council member, but, God, the entire city leadership. We thank you right now. We thank you for the accomplishments, oh God, where you brought us from, where you're going to take us. We look to you, God, because we know, Lord, that all things work together for those that love you. And, oh God, how we thank you and how our city is much better than it was before, but is constantly, oh God, on the move. And we thank you for the leadership and the guidance. Lord, we ask these and all other blessings in your Son Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I will ask for a moment of silence. This moment of silence is for Beaumont Police Officer James Gus Gaines. He died in 1917 in the line of duty, but was never officially recognized. After research, he is now confirmed as a line-of-duty fatality and will be added to the Beaumont Police Department, State of Texas, and National Police Officer Memorial in an effort to recognize and honor his ultimate silence and sacrifice. If you would please stand once more for me. Thank you. Thank you. You may be seated. May I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Muton.
Present.
Mayor Protem Samuel.
Present.
Councilmember Durio.
Here.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Felschau.
Present.
And Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Thank you. We have one proclamation today, and I will read as follow. And the proclamation is for pioneering women. Whereas women are an integral part in the success of society, and whereas pioneering women is a grassroots organization founded to enhance the lives of women, and its mission is to motivate, educate, activate, and uplift women for the betterment of humankind. Whereas Thursday, August 4th, 2022, is rocking and rolling to our drumbeat. It commemorates the 102nd anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution, which guarantees women the right to vote and showcasing the diversity and contributions of women from all interests, occupations, and livelihoods. And whereas accomplishing the milestone required a lengthy and difficult struggle, and this celebration help us to reflect on this unprecedented achievement. Pioneering Women is dedicated to honoring the legacy of those past pioneers and spotlight the contribution of present-day pioneers in our community. Whereas in honor of this celebration, Pioneering Women will be presenting Rockin' and Rollin' to our own drumbeat at a luncheon on Thursday, August 4th, 2022, honoring the following women for their dedication and contributions to their professions, to their communities: Velina Johnson, T. Doe, Melanie Cammo, Charley Hannah Rule, Mary Young, and Charisma Papillon. And whereas proceeds from the annual event support women in crisis and many other nonprofit organizations in the community. And also, it provides textbooks for students of higher learning and students of second chances seeking high school equivalency with GED tests. Now therefore, I, Robin Muton, Mayor of the City of Beaumont, in honor and in recognition of all women in our community, do hereby declare Thursday, August 4th, 2022 as Pioneering Women Day in Beaumont and ask all citizens to join in and recognize the women of this great community who have given of themselves for the betterment of society. Accordingly, I, Mayor Robin Muton, have set my hand and called the Seal of the City of Beaumont to be affixed, signed this day, July 19th, 2022. And accepting will be Marlene Guillory, President of Pioneering Women, and any others, please come forward to accept your proclamation. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations, Dr. Johnson. Congratulations. How are you? Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations.
How good it is. You make us feel so special. Thank you so much. We really appreciate every year that we get a chance to come before you and you join in with us to celebrate wonderful women that we have in our enlarged community. Every single day, more and more women rise to the top and make a difference in our lives for everyone, for the betterment of our life. Thank you all so much, council. We love coming here and receiving these kudos from you all. It makes us feel so wonderful. And come and help us celebrate our honorees for this year on August the 4th at the Holiday Inn 1130, and y'all can rock and roll with us.
Well, thank you. Thank you so very much, Marlene, and to all of the ladies. Congratulations. Thank you for what you do in our community and for the contributions that you make in our city. Thank you. And to the President, Georgine Guillory, thank you. Now is the time for any citizen who wish to speak. You may make public comment on consent agendas, items number eight through 14. Please complete the green slip to the back of the room, hand it to the clerk to the front of the room. She will call your name. At the time that you approach the podium, you will have three minutes to speak. The green light will come on for you to speak, and the red light will come on at the end of your three minutes.
Just a second, Mayor. I think we have someone that hasn't filled out a green slip.
We'll let them finish exiting the room.
Then we don't have any mayor. She won't speak on red tags, structures. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I would call for a motion for the consent agenda. Is there a motion, please?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilmember Neal and Councilmember Turner.
Thank you, Mayor. I have several questions. The first one on B. I have some concerns on this one. This is for some bridge inspections that are part of some stuff through TechStop that I think TechStop sent to the city that we need to take care of. Right now, the way this thing is ranked, the recommendation is to give this to a company out of Austin. When we have a company that has submitted for this, that in my opinion, after working with these guys for literally my whole life, and they're right here in Beaumont, Texas, know they're highly qualified and very capable of providing these services. I just struggle with why would we send this stuff out of the area when we have people right here in Beaumont that can do it?
Mr. Penn?
Yes, ma'am. So in your packet, in the agenda item, you do see the scoring sheet that is in relation to the staff scoring of the responses to the requests for qualifications. I believe Mr. Barkoviac has some additional information on that. And although you don't have it in your packet, it is something we could provide to you after the meeting. Bart, do you have anything?
Yeah, we had four respondents. WJE just has a ton of experience, including the guy who originally did the TechStop Bridge Inspection Program for them back 30 years ago as part of the firm. So their experience in this particular area of expertise outweighed the other applicants in our evaluation. TechStop does bridge inspections every two years for all the bridges in the city. We have 58 bridges in total. These 13 are in need of some level of structural repair as per the last inspection report. They're all classified as Level 3, which recommends that the urgency level is that we address it before the next TechStop Bridge Inspection. We're also addressing another 14 bridges internally with streets and drainage and 29 bridges with traffic management. To some level, there are different markers, delineators, et cetera, missing as required by TechStop. We're addressing those inside.
I have another comment I'd like to make on that. You know, we're about to have a vendor fair. This council's been trying to get local participation. And if anybody wants to know why people aren't bidding the stuff, this is it right here. We're going to give the stuff to Austin and not leave the stuff local?
Mayor, I'd like for a city attorney to comment on why we follow this process.
Can you be more specific? The process for bidding or the scoring selection?
The process for bidding as well as how the scoring plays into the process.
So the process for bidding is required by state law to make sure that it's fair and applicable. And most of these are blind bids, so we don't really know what it's going to look like. The scoring process is, I want to say, weighted in case we have someone who has same or similar bid numbers, but just to kind of make a difference where staff can differentiate between those levels of expertise, prior work experience, our past behaviors in terms of looking with bidding. And I think Bart can probably jump in. Sometimes we have bidders who bid in the past, but we've had, they have current contracts with the cities where they're either behind on the work or haven't been doing the work adequately. So we would want to score them or need that scoring process to kind of say why that lower bid wouldn't be considered based on this past practice of dealing with that particular bidder or vendor.
Councilmember Turner?
That was actually one of the ones I had highlighted, because I know as we say, experience, experience, and I understand that. But at some point, how can you gain experience if you don't get the opportunity? So that's one thing that I was looking at when I actually seen the Beaumont bid versus, you know, the out-of-town bid. So I just kind of wanted to get a better understanding when we say experience, just out of curiosity. How can they get the experience without the opportunities?
Well, we're ranking the experience they bring to the bridge repairs for the city of Beaumont. So we're just looking for the best deal for the citizens for this particular work. This is a specific area of expertise that we don't have inside, which is why we're bringing in outside expertise. And we did not, in this case, mark any of the respondents as being deficient in some way due to past experience with the city. It's just purely ranking what they bring to the table in terms of this work and what they've put in the proposal.
Thank you.
Councilmember Getz.
Following the comments of Councilmembers Neal and Turner, I personally am not real comfortable at this point in voting on this because I'd like to see the underlying support documents that went into making the scores that are in this matrix. You know, Fitz and Shipman has an incredibly good reputation here in Beaumont. And if they're not giving scores in some of these categories, such as capacity to perform, that are as high or at least equal to some of these other firms, I'd like to know the reasons why. So unless there's a critical need to have this voted on today, I'd like to move that we table this for a week and be given the opportunity to look at the support documents and whatever other papers you feel like we need to look at to make a fully informed decision on this.
We can provide all four responses. It's not critical that we pass it this week. It can wait a week.
Then can we pull this one out and vote on the rest of the consent agenda and table this one for a week?
Yes, we can. Okay, Councilmember Durio?
I just have one question. I know this is a bid, but I didn't see any prices on how much they're charging.
Due to state law, you can't compare engineering services based on price. It's based on response and experience in the proposal.
Okay, can you let the record reflect that we're going to pull item?
We need to just amend the motion. If Councilmember Neal wants to amend the motion, or Councilmember Samuel, Mayor Protem Samuel, I'm sorry, can amend the motion to exclude whichever item and table it.
I'll amend the motion to exclude item, this item B.
Item B.
That's my motion.
Okay. We have a motion to?
Second.
Second. Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor? All in favor?
Hang on, Mayor. I still have some other questions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
On C, we're settling a lawsuit with a contractor for some work that was done a few years back. From a staff standpoint, I just want to know what we're going to do moving forward to make sure we don't put ourselves in this position again.
So a lot of the issues that's stemmed from this lawsuit dealt with the contract and the contract language. So we are going to, because that's a specialty area. We're in the process of working with some litigation specialists that deal specifically with municipal construction litigation to look at our process and our forms to see how and how that needs to be amended moving forward.
All right, thank you. All right, one other question on J. Mr. Boone, what exactly are these temporary staff employees going to be used for?
So if you look at the final page of the bid response, you'll see it's a variety of positions: office clerical, unskilled, office clerical skilled, laborer, skilled and unskilled, vocational nurse, equipment operator. So essentially, anytime we are short-staffed and we need temporary staffing, this group will provide that to us at these rates.
All right, so is the problem right now that you're not able to hire employees fast enough to be able to keep up? Or what's the concern?
It is a difficult environment. The economy is strong. And we just, we come across situations where we simply, and the process is not, you know, to hire on with the City of Beaumont is not as onerous as some cities. But there is a process. And so sometimes we become, we were in a situation where we simply have to have some staffing and positions. And so it's a longstanding process to have a contract like this. And so that's why we have it in place.
And I don't know any of these staffing companies, but one of the things that pops out to me, you're not going to get an equipment operator for $15 an hour. So whether or not they're going through the city or through a staffing agent, I'd be very concerned on bringing an equipment operator that's only making $15 an hour.
And I can jump in a little bit. And streets and drainage and water utilities are primarily brought in at the laborer level. And then they'll work them in that level. And then, you know, if they work out, they'll put in for a permanent position and work their way up. But you're entirely correct. To my knowledge, I don't know that we've brought in an equipment operator from any of them.
All right, thank you.
I have a question. Have these jobs been posted on our website?
Yes, we constantly have postings for laborers, skilled and unskilled. Some less so, like vocational nurses. But again, it's an ad needed basis, so.
How long have they been posted? I mean, you have a clerica job at $22 an hour, and no one responded to it?
Well, these aren't specifically to fill a position that, so for example, we just had an admin that left. And so in order to fill that position, sometimes you can backfill it with adjusting positions, or sometimes we have to bring in somebody from a temp agency. And so it just depends, it depends on what activity within the city.
Okay. Councilmember Turner?
This is another one I had highlighted. With inflation going on and the cost of living going up, have we as a city ever looked at the minimums of our minimums as of right now compared to other cities? I think that can have a lot to do with, you know, actually being competitive if we are a lot lower than other cities.
Yes, so our human resources staffing is constantly looking at specific types of positions, for example, like admin or specific types of skill sets. Because you're right, we have to stay competitive because we don't want to lose good employees to other agencies or other, you know, private entities. So it's constantly looked at to try to make sure that we're competitive. And, you know, across the board, we've looked at and are looking at, we're in the budget process right now. So we're looking at, you know, basically across the board as to whether or not we're competitive.
And second, to piggyback on that, you know, I was going to say, yeah, we are in the budget season right now. So it's a good time to kind of try to look at it and see if we can address it, or at least come with a strategic plan to get there. And if you can, I would like to see an example of one of the studies we did with the minimums, if you don't mind sending it to me, an email.
Yes, and again, it's constant. So, you know, what will happen is a department director, a division manager will reach out and say, "Look, I've got an issue of filling these positions," or "I'm losing staff because we're just not competitive." And so what HR will do is we'll go out and we'll survey public sector, private sector to see, "Look, are we competitive? Are we out of whack? Do we need to make adjustments?" So that's ongoing, but we can get you as much of that as possible.
Thank you, Chris.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion?
Just one last question.
Sure.
For agenda, for item number H, I know we recently did a study with Corona. Did this have anything to do with some of the findings from the report that we're now doing this, cleaning out the tanks, et cetera?
Yes, we had started our tank cleaning program before Corona came in. And as part of Corona's recommendation, they recommended that we continue that process. So last fiscal year, we cleaned half of the storage tanks for water within the city. And then this year, we're finishing the other half of those storage tanks. We'll drain them, clean the inside, and then inspect the inside of those tanks for any deficiencies. And then we plan to come back next fiscal year, revisit the first section of tanks that we had cleaned, and evaluate the frequency that we need to continue that cleaning program, whether that needs to be two or three years, or how often that has to happen to keep them clean.
And Bart, for the citizens watching, can you kind of explain to them the benefit of cleaning these tanks on a consistent basis?
Well, you get buildups in the tanks of manganese iron deposits within that. And you can, if you leave them long enough, get biofilms within the tanks that will work against you in keeping chlorine residuals up in the system. So by cleaning those tanks, you're fighting discolored water. You're improving your ability to keep chlorine residuals in the system.
Councilmember Getz.
In the aftermath of receiving the Corona report, Bart, there are some citizens that look at that, especially the part about tank cleaning. And they have indicated a concern that it made it look like the city was not appropriately cleaning tanks on a schedule. I don't know what's going on here with my voice, but was not cleaning tanks on a schedule. Can you put those fears to rest? Did we have, and did we have even before the Corona report, a plan to continue to clean the tanks on a regular basis?
We started prior to the Corona report. Prior to me coming on with my tenure, it looks as if we just rehabbed the tank at whatever point we did. And at that point of the rehabilitation, we would clean it. We do and have forever, as per TCQ requirements, do an annual inspection on every single tank every year. That does not include draining the tank to inspect inside, much less cleaning the tank. It consists of inspecting the outside of the tank as per TCQ regulations.
Thank you.
Any other comments? We have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. I'm sorry.
Did that?
So the motion should have said excluding.
I'm sorry, excluding item B. Thank you.
And then you need a separate motion to table item B.
May I have a motion to table item B?
I move that we table item B until next one.
Have a motion and a second on the floor? Any other discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number one, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor and council, item number one is an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Chapter 28 of the Code of Ordinances of Beaumont, Texas, and in particular, the boundaries of the zoning districts as indicated upon the zoning map of Beaumont, Texas by changing the zoning of property presently zoned LI Light Industrial District to GCND, General Commercial Multifamily Dwelling District, for property located at 1190 and 1192 Gulf Street." Street, Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas, providing for severability, providing for repeal, and providing a penalty. Joseph and Dari would like to rezone the property located at 1190 and 1192 Gulf Street. At a joint public hearing held on June 27, 2022, the planning commission recommended eight to zero to deny the request to rezone the property from LI to GCMD. It should be noticed, protest against this request was received from thirty-five percent of the land immediately adjoining the subject property. Therefore, a vote of three-fourths of the city council would be required if the city council chooses to approve the requested request. The administration recommends denial of this item.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. You've heard the reading of item number one. May I have a motion?
A move to deny.
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the denial of item number one, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number two, please?
Yes, ma'am. Item number two is an ordinance entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 28 of the Code of Ordinances of Beaumont, Texas, and in particular, the boundaries of the zoning districts as indicated upon the zoning map of Beaumont, Texas by changing the zoning of property presently zoned RS Residential Single Family Dwelling District to RMH Residential Multifamily Dwelling District, highest density, for property located at 1020, 1060, and 1070 Sack Street, Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas, providing for severability, providing for repeal, and providing for penalty. Fred Vernon would like to rezone the property at 1020, 1060, and 1070 Sack Street. At a joint public hearing held June 27, 2022, the planning commission recommended seven to one to approve the request to rezone the property in question. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number two. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve. Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? Councilmember Turner?
Just for the record, I'd like to recuse myself on this particular vote.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor of approving item number two, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number three, please?
Yes, ma'am. Item number three is an ordinance entitled an ordinance granting a specific use permit to allow a duplex in an RS Residential Single Family Dwelling District for property located at 8230 San Carlos Street in the city of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. Akram Khalil is requesting the specific use permit to allow a duplex at 8230 San Carlos. At a joint public hearing held on June 27, 2022, the planning commission recommended eight to zero to approve the request for a specific use permit for the duplex with the following condition: landscaping and screening to meet zoning ordinance requirements. Based on this, the administration is recommending approval of this item with the same condition.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number three. May I have a motion, please?
I'd like to move that we deny.
I have a motion. Is there a second? Have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor of denying?
I'd like to explain why. The, so I've received phone calls from several of the residents in this neighborhood, and I have to side with the citizens over there that it's just not fair to put a duplex in a residential neighborhood. I think there's proper places for apartment complexes and duplexes, but I don't think right in the middle of a residential street is the right place.
Thank you, Councilmember Neal. Councilmember Phil.
Just more clarification. Councilman, can you tell me roughly how many neighbors contacted you? Is it more than two?
More than two.
And the square footage on this is thirty-six seventy-two, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And I have no issue with him wanting to build a house there. That's not the, that's not my complaint. I just don't think a duplex is the right thing.
Councilmember Turner?
Mr. Manager, for this particular area, is it maybe a duplex or apartment that may be across the street, around the block, you know, somewhere in close proximity?
Not aware of any, no, sir. And looking, at the last page of your agenda item, you'll see the vicinity map and zoning, and of course, the zoning is all single-family, but it appears that there's single-family dwelling units around there.
Councilmember Gibbs.
At the planning and zoning meeting, there were several residents of that neighborhood that appeared in opposition to this, and if you look at the map, it is right slap dab in the middle of a residential neighborhood of single-family homes. You know, I can understand the neighbors not necessarily wanting to have their properties potentially devalued by having duplexes start to go into their neighborhood.
Well, I would also like to say that the neighbors that live on both sides of the property did show up to say that they've lived there some forty years, and to put a, an apartment unit right in the middle of a residential area in the street where you've had residents to live in a community for over forty years, and to make that their home, to not know from contract to contract or year to year who your neighbors are going to be. And they were really, they were adamant about having that unit built in the middle of their Do we have any other discussion? All in favor of denying item number three?
Aye. Oh, sorry.
Please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? We have one. Oh, I'm sorry, that was the last one. I'm sorry. Okay, we have no opposition. The motion carries. Thank you. May I have the reading of item number four, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor and council, item number four is an ordinance entitled an ordinance granting a specific use permit to allow a construction business with an outdoor lay-down yard in a GCMD, General Commercial Multifamily Dwelling District, for property located at 1320 Caldwell Avenue, city of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. Xavier Williams is requesting the specific use permit to allow the construction business at this address. At a joint public hearing held on June 27, 2022, the planning commission recommended seven to zero with one abstention to approve the request for a specific use permit to allow a construction business with an outdoor lay-down yard, subject to the following conditions: number one, submit a revised site plan showing parking and required landscaping; number two, provide landscaping to meet this ordinance's requirements along both street frontages; and then finally, provide a ten-foot wide landscape buffer with trees along west property line that borders residential zoning and an eight-foot tall wood or masonry fence to meet zoning ordinance's requirement. And the administration recommends approval with the same conditions.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number four with the conditions. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve with the conditions.
Have a motion and a second with the conditions. Any discussion? All in favor of approving item number four, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number five, please?
Yes, ma'am. Item number five is an ordinance entitled an ordinance granting a specific use permit to allow a cellular tower in an LI Light Industrial District for property located at 8475 Landis Drive in the city of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. Anne Hathaway, representing SBA Network Services LLC, proposes to construct a one-hundred-and-seventy-nine-foot-tall cellular tower at this address. At a joint public hearing held on June 27, 2022, the planning commission recommended eight to zero to approve the request for the specific use permit, subject to the following conditions: number one, utilize the existing approach and gravel path located just west of the site instead of a new proposed driveway; number two, provide a copy of the recorded access easement and lease agreement; number three, provide a six-foot-tall wood or masonry fence to be constructed six foot, six feet inside the north and west perimeter edges of the lease site with a solid gate; and number four, provide a landscape buffer along the north and west edges of the tower site consisting of shrubs, save and except for the gated area to be, to meet zoning ordinance's requirements. Administration recommends approval with the same conditions.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number five with the conditions. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve with the conditions.
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? All in favor of approving item number five, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number six, please?
Yes, ma'am. Item number six is an ordinance entitled an ordinance granting a specific use permit to allow an event center in the central business district, or CBD, for property located at 308 Orleans Street in the city of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. Cameron Maraz has requested the specific use permit to open an event center at this location. At a joint public hearing held June 27, 2022, the planning commission recommended eight to zero to approve the request with the following condition: that the building must be sprinkled if occupancy load is found in excess of the numbers set by the fire department. The administration recommends approval with the same condition.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number six with the conditions. May I have a motion, please?
So move to approve with the conditions.
May I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number seven, please?
Yes, ma'am. Item number seven is an ordinance entitled an ordinance granting a specific use permit to allow a bar in a GCMD, General Commercial Multifamily Dwelling District, for the property located at 2949 College Street, Suite 120, in the city of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow a daiquiri bar at 2949 College, Suite 120. At a joint public hearing held June 27, 2022, the planning commission recommended seven to one to deny the request for the specific use permit for the bar. The administration is recommending denial as well.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number seven. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to deny.
Have a motion to deny. May I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion?
I'm sorry, I missed the second. Who made the second?
Taylor Amey. Flip the coin.
Councilmember Phil.
Just for clarification, city manager, could you clarify why the denial is being made, the recommendation for denial?
Yes, sir. So if you look at the vicinity map in your agenda item, you'll see this is proximate to both the health department, there's a hospital to the northwest, and there's also a city park not too far to the north. And so based on, based on that, we feel like this is not an appropriate use at this location.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor of approving item numbers, I'm sorry, denied? Item number seven, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed to that? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number eight, please?
Mayor and council, item number eight, I'm going to pass these around. Actually, items number eight through twelve are related to each other, and so I think for the sake of clarity, I'm going to give an overview, and of course, we'll go through each item individually and discuss each item individually, but again, since they are related, I wanted to go over them together. And I should point out that for items eight through, eight through twelve, this economic development package may represent the largest economic development package that the city has offered in its history, if not one of the largest. As you'll see in items eight through twelve, there are actually two projects separated into two different phases. One is Project Mercury, or OCI Fuels, which is a biofuel project in two phases, converting wood chips to biosynthesis gas, and one being Project Deep Blue, or OCI Clean Ammonia, which is an ammonia fertilizing facility. In order to bring this project, these projects, to Beaumont, or in this case, just outside the city limits, we are proposing to offer herein an industrial development agreement with terms that are typical of our other IDAs during the construction project period. In addition, we're submitting the offer of an industrial development abatement agreement for a hundred percent of the value for fifteen years. I should note, while these IDA terms are not typical, we are recommending them for the following reasons. Number one, OCI has already invested over three billion dollars in the Beaumont area, converting a mothballed plant into the OCI and nat gasoline methanol plant, bringing approximately three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand in revenue annually to the city of Beaumont beginning in 2025, and from OCI, and an estimated five-point-three million dollars being provided to the city of Beaumont from the nat gas facility beginning in 2026. This demonstrates pretty clearly an ability to realize such projects of this magnitude. These projects, if realized, could represent up to four-point-nine billion dollars, with up to two thousand construction jobs and two-hundred-and-forty permanent jobs. The secondary impact of these investments would be quite significant. Once the proposed IDA expires, if approved, we estimate that the project would result in an annual revenue for the city of Beaumont of just under twenty million dollars for the first year, and then reducing in the amount of about one million dollars for every two and a half, two to three years after that, due to a reduction in value. And then finally, OCI is proposing to pay the city one million dollars a year for the next five years, beginning in FY '23. So again, I wanted to kind of give you the overview of items eight through twelve as we go through them, and I guess before we do, I just, I wanted to, you know, thank OCI for their continued investment in our community, their leadership. I wanted to thank Griffith Mosley and Johnson's team for facilitating this discussion, helping this, bring this proposal forward. And then, of course, I would like to thank our team, which would include, of course, the council, the mayor, for considering this, Shereen Reed, our city attorney, Myles Haynes and Todd Semino, our CFO, which has brought us to this point. I have handed out a couple handouts in front of you. One is the map of the proposed location. The three pages, they're three different sheets. One is the two different projects, separate, showing the proposed investment. In addition, I've also, the second sheet is OCI's and nat gas's investment in the city in the past with the revenues that we expect to realize in the coming years. So with that, I'll go ahead and move with item number eight, which is to consider a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to enter into an industrial development agreement with OCI Fuels USA for phases one and two of an industrial development. Again, some of this is redundant, but for the sake of clarification, the city was approached about entering into an industrial development agreement in order to promote the development of an industrial facility that would convert biomass, or local wood chips, into biosynthesis gas and biomethanol. The project is located at and near the OCI facility on Highway 347, just beyond the city limits. Included in your agenda item packet are the proposed industrial development agreement with OCI Fuels USA for phases one and two of an industrial development. Um, included in your agenda id, item packet are the proposed industrial development agreements for phases one and two of the proposed project. Again, the agreement proposes an abatement of one hundred percent for fifteen years. Uh, the project is anticipated to be valued at one-point-seven to two-point-one billion dollars, and together would employ between six-hundred and one-thousand construction workers, and up to one-hundred-and-twenty permanent employees. Uh, the agreement requires that phase one must commence construction by December 31st, 2025, and phase two must connect, commence construction by January 1st, 2030 for phase two. I should mention that, uh, in addition, the agreement requires that five payments in the amount of one million dollars will be made annually, uh, to the city beginning in fiscal year 2023. Um, as mentioned earlier, it should be noted that a separate agreement is also being proposed, uh, related, uh, to the ammonia plant and the fuel plant, um, to be, uh, worked out during, uh, for the period during the construction phases of the two projects. Based on that, uh, the administration is recommending approval of item number eight, which would be the industrial development agreement for the OCI Fuels USA Phase One and Two, s, portion of the proposed project.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number eight, and I would like to make the motion to approve item number eight, the industrial development agreement with OCI Fuel USA for Phase One and Phase Two of the industrial development, and may I have a second, please?
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? All in favor of approving item number eight, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number nine, please?
Yes, ma'am. Item number nine, related, is council to consider a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to enter into an industrial development agreement with OCI Clean Ammonia LLC for phases one and two of an industrial development. Again, the city was recently approached about entering into an industrial development agreement in order to promote the development of an industrial facility that would produce ammonia. Uh, the project is located at and near the OCI facility on Highway 347, just beyond the city limits. Attached within your, uh, agenda item are the proposed industrial development agrees, agreements for phases one and two of the proposed project. The agreement proposes an abatement of one hundred percent for fifteen years for the project. The project is anticipated to be valued at two-point-four to two-point-eight billion dollars, and together would employ up to two thousand construction workers and up to one-hundred-and-twenty permanent employees. The agreements require that phase one must commence construction by December 31st, 2025, and phase two must commence construction by December 31st, 2028. The abatement period would commence on January 1st, 2028 for phase one, and January 1st, 2030 for phase two. In addition, the agreement requires that five payments in the amount of one million dollar will be made annually to the city beginning in fiscal year 2023. Um, I should point out that that's not in addition to the other, it's, it's simply a one-million-dollar payment for either or. Uh, it should be noted that separate agreement is also being proposed, uh, for a related biofuel plant, which we just discussed, along with a separate industrial agreement that outlines the amount of taxes to be paid to the city during the construction phases of the project, which is a future item. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number one, and I would like to make the motion to approve the industrial development agreement with OCI Clean Ammonia LLC for Phase One and Phase Two of the industrial development. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? Councilmember Turner, and then councilmember Durio.
Hey, Chris, uh, can you explain to the audience and the crowd and citizens that may be watching, the purpose of us putting a date on there, December 31st, 2025, for Phase One, and December 31st, 2028, for Phase Two? Just...
Yeah, so we, um, again, I think this group is anxious to start, and we're anxious for them to start. So we've got to have some parameters in the agreement, uh, whereby they have to start within a certain period of time, in exchange for the incentives that are offered. So that's why we have the deadlines therein. It's not to say that they couldn't come back and ask for additional time, um, but we need to have some parameters in order to offer the incentives.
Thank you.
Councilmember Durio.
Chris, I don't know if you misspoke, but you said, um, phase one, uh, the abatement period would commence on, uh, for phase, on January 1st, 2030 for Phase Two, and then here it says January 30th.
Yeah, I think in your agenda item, it's a typo, so the, um, January, the, let's see, the 2030 should be January 1st.
Okay.
It's a typo in the agenda item. Yes, sir.
Okay.
January 1st, 2030 is the correct date.
Okay. Any, councilmember Phil Shaw?
Yeah, Chris, just for the sake of clarification with our citizens, when these projects first came before the council and executive session, they were posted as Projects Mercury and Deep Blue, and there was, there was some comments that we were speaking in code, uh, and I just wanted to clarify that, that these projects were named by OCI and not by us, and we wasn't speaking in code. That's just the way it was presented to us, correct?
Correct. And that's the way the economic development process works, is we have to maintain confidentiality, and that's at the request of the proposers, not necessarily us. We'd like for it all to be open and freely discussed, but the reality is, in economic development, you have to, as long as necessary, uh, have some kind of confidentiality. But when the agreement, of course, is brought forward, then we want, you know, of course, everyone to, to see what's going on.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor of approving item number nine, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number 10, please?
Yes, ma'am. Item number 10 is to consider a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to enter into an industrial development agree, with agreement with OCI Fuels USA for economic development incentives during the construction phase of an industrial development. Again, the city was recently approached about entering into an industrial development agreement in order to promote the development of industrial facilities that would produce biofuels at and near the OCI facility located on Highway 347, just beyond the city limits. The enclosed agreement outlines taxes due to the city during the construction phases of this project. The proposed terms are typical of other, uh, industrial development agreements, uh, issued by the cities, requiring payment of eighty percent of taxes due for the years 2023 through 2025, and seventy-five percent of the taxes due for years 2026 through 2029. Uh, however, it should be noted that the abatement period would commence at execution and end on December 31st, 2027, or completion of construction of Phase One, and December 31st, 2029, or completion of construction, uh, for Phase Two, whichever should occur first. Again, the project is anticipated to be valued at one-point-seven to two-point-one billion dollars, and together would employ, uh, between six-hundred and one-thousand construction workers and up to one-hundred-and-twenty permanent employees. The administration is recommending approval.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number 10, and again, I would like to make the motion to approve item number 10. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? Councilmember Phil Shaw?
No, I was scratching my head.
Uh, no discussion? All in favor of approving item number 10, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We have the reading of item number 11, please.
Yes, ma'am. Item number 11 is to consider a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to enter into, into an industrial development agreement with OCI Clean Ammonia LLC for economic development incentives during the construction phase of the industrial development. The enclosed agreement outlines taxes due to the city during the construction phases of this project, uh, which again is the ammonia, um, phase of the, or portion of the project. The proposed terms are typical of other industrial development agreements, requiring payments of eighty percent of taxes due for years 2023 through 2025, and seventy-five percent of the taxes due for years 2026 through 2029. However, it should be noted that the abatement period would commence at execution and end on December 31st, 2027, or completion of construction for, of Phase One, and December 31st, 2029, or completion of construction for Phase Two, whichever occurs first. Again, this portion of the project is anticipated to be valued at two-point-four to two-point-eight billion, and together would employ up to two thousand construction workers and up to one-hundred-and-twenty permanent employers. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number 11. I would like to make the motion to approve item number 11, and may I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. I think Turner? Councilmember Turner?
I give it, I give it to Mike.
Okay. Councilmember Getz make the motion for the second. Any discussion? All in favor of approving item number 11, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We have the reading of item number 12, please.
Yes, ma'am. Item number 12 is council to consider a resolution authorizing a letter of intent, or LOI, with OCI Beaumont LLC, or one of its affiliates. OCI would like to enter into an LOI, or letter of intent, with the city of Beaumont to allow a third party to perform a site study at the city's landfill and wastewater treatment facility. The study would help OCI determine the feasibility in landfill gas recovery project and wastewater anaerobic digester product, project. Due to time and cost of such study, OCI is requesting a six-month exclusivity period in which to conduct the site study. If the study found, finds that a transaction of the above-mentioned project between the city and OCI are feasible, then the terms of any transaction would be subject to negotiations at that time. Uh, the administration is recommending approval of this resolution.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number 12.
Move to approve.
Councilmember Phil Shaw made the motion to approve. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? All in favor of approving item number 12, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number 13, please?
Yes, ma'am. Item number 13 is an ordinance entitled an ordinance, uh, of the city of Beaumont, Texas, authorizing the suspension of the effective date for an additional ninety days beyond the August 5, 2022 effective date, uh, proposed by Entergy Texas, Inc., in connection with its rate increase application entitled, "Application of Entergy Texas, Inc. for Authority to Change Rates," filed on July 1st, 2022, authorizing participation, uh, with the Entergy Texas, Inc. Service Area Cities Steering Committee, hiring of experts, authorizing the city's participation to the full extent permitted by law at the Public Utility Commission of Texas, requiring reimbursement of municipal rate case expenses, finding that the meeting complies with the Open Meeting Act, making other findings and provisions related to the subject, and declaring an effective date. In exchange for reading the caption, uh, Shere Reed, our city attorney, is going to lead the item.
Thank you. As mentioned in the caption, um, Energy sent out their letter of intent to raise their rates on July 1st of this year. That rate increase would be, uh, a base rate of approximately a hundred and thirty-one-point-four million dollars, uh, which excludes, annually, which excluding fuel, would be about eleven-point-two, uh, increase. Uh, to put that in terms for our citizens, that would be roughly thirteen dollars and fifty cents for a residential customer who's using about a thousand kilowatts per, per month. Um, what this res, uh, ordinance would allow the city to do would be to suspend it until November 3rd, um, and allow us to review those rate increases and negotiate those rate increases on behalf of our citizens as a collective with our steering committee, as we've done on some other, um, rate increases, so that they will be pushed back to November 3rd, and there's no expenses incurred on the part of the city.
Thank you. Any discussion? Any comments? Councilmember Getz.
Are we sure that they haven't already implemented this? Because I opened my electric bill today, and it was seven-hundred-and-seventy dollars, which is two-hundred-and-fifty dollars more than I've ever paid for an electric bill. So I'm, I'm just kind of curious, but seriously, what would happen if, after all this process goes through, the city council decides, we don't want to allow this rate to increase? How, how, how would that process play out?
So, as you know, we do regulate the energy prices, um, that's why we only have one, uh, producer, so that if, if we decided that the rate increased, that we came back, it was still too high, we would need to go back into negotiations.
Councilmember Turner.
And that kind of caught my attention, because I, I see in, like, I looked in other cities, you know, like, some of the biggest cities actually have different options when it comes to, you know, electricity, energy. Can you kind of explain?
So in cities, and I'm just going to use Houston, because that's the closest cities that have what they can call competitive energy services, um, don't regulate their energy. So what that means is that those companies get to, unilaterally decide to raise their rates, so if you want to go to Green Mountain Energy, because they're three cents cheaper today, and not use Energy Texas, because they're three cents cheaper at some point, Energy Mountain can raise their rates, and you bounce back and forth between the company, shopping for rates. What the city does is we regulate the energy inside the city, which means that we shop for the best rates collectively for our citizens, that prevents that kind of competitive, where one company will say, you know, we're going to each be, instead of one company being cheaper, we're going to each charge the same amount and a same amount of higher rate. So when we regulate, we try to keep, keep the competitiveness amongst ourselves, so to speak.
Yeah. So I guess, on the flip side, um, if they are being competitive, it's possible that they can keep going lower to be competitive. Is that a possibility?
Or they can say, Green Mountains raising their rates, we're going to raise our rates as well, or Green Mountain can say Energy is raising their rates, we're going to raise our rates as well. What we do is we lock in those prices, so a citizen in Houston who may get a notice that their bill is going to go up at, for the next month, that won't happen in Beaumont, because they can't raise their rates without first going through the city.
Thank you. I, I saved my light bill as well, that's why I was like, whoa, it's ridiculous.
Yeah.
Councilmember Durio.
It's your race. So what, what's the better system, the way we do it here, or being able to shop around for the best rate?
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll point your attention to what happened, um, during the ice storm in some, um, some cities that do have competitive en, um, energy rates, and it's caught up in, um, Austin, San Antonio area, where they had to deal with the rolling blackouts and, and outages. That didn't happen here. They can't shut off, um, the power, they can't enforce that, and we didn't have those issues, um, in the, in those other markets where they do have those problems, like, those are issues that can do, I think both present their own challenges, um, equally, um, but in terms of best value, we've always determined that it was, uh, better for our citizens to regulate it so that we can get a bulk of discount, have bigger buying authority, and there are several cities that are a part of the steering committee that, um, that kind of collectively, uh, make our authority stronger. Um, but I think that both, both opportunities offer their own challenges and benefits.
Well, in the current system that we're using, that you're talking about right now, are there e, ever any other energy companies that come in and may want to compete with Entergy?
We haven't been, we haven't been approached.
You know, we get that question a lot, uh, why is Entergy the only company? And I'm glad you stated that, because we haven't been approached by other companies to come into our city. Uh, one thing I will say, uh, Energy, uh, make sure they treat everybody equal. They will give you your monthly bill.
We all have.
Absolutely.
It's good of them.
So any other discussion? All in favor?
I don't think there's a motion.
Mayor, we didn't do a motion on second, so there's none on the floor.
Yeah, there is no motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. None.
I'm sorry. Councilman Getz would immediately take complaining about his stuff.
I move to approve, Mayor.
Second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second on the floor. Um, all in favor of approving the item, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We have the reading of item number 14, please.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor and council, item number 14 is to consider a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to execute an addendum to the sales contract of 555 Main Street. Uh, the city purchased the property at 555 Main Street on July 29, 2021. The sales contract had a provision that prohibited the sale and/or rehabilitation and use of the property. The proposed addendum would remove that requirement, uh, that the building be demolished. Administration is recommending approval.
You've heard the reading of item number 14. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor? Any discussion? Councilmember Felshaw.
Yes, city manager, for the sake of our citizens, can you walk us through this? Once, if, if this is approved, what happens next? And how do we move forward?
So I think, as we know, everything was kind of put on pause recently when we were approached by a developer for this, this building. And so this, approving this amend, addendum, rather, to the sales agreement gives the council the option to retain the building. They can still demolish the building and move forward with the original plan, but this gives the council the option to keep the building for itself or sell or lease the building. So it simply gives the council more options.
Could you also explain that originally, what was in the original contract and why we're to this point?
Right. So, I mean, originally, again, when we purchased the property back in, back last summer, the original idea was to bring the building down to develop a plaza at that location. As part of the purchase agreement from the, from the seller, the seller required that the building come down. And so this addendum would remove that requirement, which again would give the council more options.
Thank you.
And Chris, it's true that if we go out for, I mean, to seek any, you mentioned leasing the building, developing the building, whatever may, we may choose to do, that has to come before the public. I mean, that's as in a, an RHP or any other process we take, bidding out. This isn't just choosing one individual. This has to go before the public.
Correct. I think where we're at is, again, we paused on the demolition and moving forward the plaza, because we were approached unsolicited with an idea and a possible purchase of the property. So we paused that. And the idea was, well, let's, instead of just negotiating directly with one person who approaches this in the midst of this process, let's go out for a public RFP process. And so we, in the next thirty days, will issue a public RFP request for proposals, which will go through this body to be approved. It will be publicly advertised and anyone, including this individual, is welcome to bid on a proposal as to what to do with the building. And it would come back to this council, again, to decide whether or not it makes sense to perhaps sell or lease the property for residential or retail or restaurant, or move forward with the original plan, which is demolish the building and, and move forward with a plaza, or some combination of both. But it gives, it gives the council the opportunity, but yes, it will be a public process and the public will know what the next steps are.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Neal.
Thank you, mayor. Mr. Manager, twenty-one point three, isn't that essentially what Beaumont Main Street is supposed to be charged with?
There is some overlap with Build, Inc. or Beaumont Main Street. And my guess, well, my expectation is the advisory committee that we will, that we will appoint, will have some of that participation. So I wouldn't recommend just simply turning it over to Build, Inc. or Main Street, but we certainly want to have their participation in it.
All right. And twenty-one point two, how do you plan on enforcing this?
So we will work with the police department to analyze the security situation downtown and come up with a plan.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I have a question.
Councilmember Samuel.
So this, after the decision was made by the council to move forward with the demolition, was it the council's position to hold this?
I'll take that one. Without divulging too much of discussions in executive session, there was a consensus of council that requested that we reach out to see if we could have that addendum removed. And I believe that we, it was discussed in open session that that, that particular article, Article twenty-one, would prohibit the council from even considering other options for the building. And as the manager said earlier, this doesn't prevent any previous discussion by council to demolish the building, but it does give the council an option to pursue or entertain other ideas for the building without being in breach of the agreement.
All in favor of approving item number fourteen? Please signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
No.
The motion carry with one. Okay, at this time, item number fifteen. Mr. City Manager, will you please read the public hearing?
Yes, ma'am. Item number fifteen is an ordinance entitled an ordinance finding certain structures to be public notices and ordering their demolition and removal or repair, providing for severability and providing for penalty. But before we take action on that, we are going to conduct a public hearing to take input on that action. And in preparation for that public hearing, I would like to, I would like to share some of the rules and requirements that go along with, with work programs, should be, you be granted a work program. So again, if, if, in a moment, council is going to consider whether or not to order the demolition of the structures that are listed in the agenda item, there are forty-six, forty-six structures listed. So if council decides to grant additional time for any of these properties, it should, the following rules should be noted. And a copy of these requirements in both English and Spanish are available from our staff. But let me go ahead and read through a few of these rules. Number one, in order to enter into a work program, if approved by council, you must be the owner of the property or have legal documents showing you have controlling, you have control of the property. Number two, there must be no taxes owed, or you must be in an approved payment plan with the Jefferson County Tax Office. If approved for a work program by council, you would have ten days in which to enroll in the work program. It should be noted, if you sell the property during the work program, the clock does not start over. The time is still, still running. And the time in question is one hundred and fifty days to complete the repairs of the project and obtaining of a certificate of occupancy. Within that one hundred and fifty days, you have ninety days to dry the property in, which means repairing the roof, siding, windows, doors. And then you'll, if, if that's met, then you have another sixty days, again, to get the certificate of occupancy for completion of the project. So with that, mayor, we can open the public hearing.
Thank you. I will now open the floor for the public hearing. And our city clerk will call the names as they're shown. Thank you.
Excuse me. JW Daniels, forty-two seventy Cartwright, Beaumont, Texas. And he's speaking on items number two, number three, and number twenty. Number two, thirty-nine sixty-five Avenue B. Number three, thirty-nine eighty-five Avenue B. And number twenty, thirty-nine seventy INES. Do we want to set the timer, mayor, or? Just?
Yes.
Okay. You can go ahead, Mr. Daniel.
You can go ahead.
Okay, I hired Calvin, not Calvin, Alvin Hushback to do the work. And he, he tore the garage down, thirty-five Avenue, thirty-nine sixty-five Avenue B. He tore the garage down. He repaired the front porch, which I already framed up. All he did was put sand and concrete. I paid him four thousand, I think it was forty-seven hundred dollars to do that. Then, and that's all he done to the house. On thirty-nine eighty-five Avenue B, he hadn't done anything, didn't do anything to it. I take it back. He did pressure wash the house, which he said, he was charging five hundred dollars, pressure washed the house and painted. Likewise, all three of the houses, he was going on, pressure washed, he did pressure wash the house, but he never did paint them. He said he was going to caulk them and paint them. You know, they do that. Avenue on INES, he's supposed to take out the beams and level the house. He had three jack-legged levels, house levels, come over there to do the work. They didn't do anything, messed the house up almost. They took the fields out from the house, one side of the house, and the whole house didn't have anything supporting it for about two or three weeks, until I went over there and got a block put up under it, make sure it didn't fall all the way down. And he came back there and I talked to, I talked to another plumber, not a house level. He came over explaining to us what needs to be done, but Alvin Hushback didn't want to, didn't want to hire him, because he didn't have, evidently, he didn't have the money to do so. So he came over, Alvin Hushback came over there and called himself, called himself level of the house. He didn't, he came over, worked three days, and he hasn't been back since.
Okay, sir. You're, you're down to less than a minute. So with all three of these properties, do you want an extension?
Yes.
Okay, so you want to enter into an extension?
Right. I've been, I've been working on the house all, the whole, the whole inside. Most of the house, working on the house, I've done it myself.
Okay. So items number two, three, and item number thirty, you want an extension?
Twenty.
Twenty.
Twenty. Two, three, and twenty.
Twenty.
Okay.
Two, three, and twenty.
Two, three, and twenty.
Yes. Now, they say these houses were un-hazardable. Ain't nothing about this house that's been un-hazardable, unlivable.
Somebody live in these? Someone live in these houses?
No, what they say, they say unhazardable, hazardous. These houses are not unhazardable to live in. They're unsafe, they're not unsafe. They never look inside.
But you're saying that of all three, correct?
All three.
All three.
Okay. So we will put your request in for an extension.
Okay. And by the way, I filed on the insurance and they denied on Calvin's insurance. And they, they denied because he lied to them about what he wasn't supposed, about what he wasn't, he didn't do. He, he told me, he took out a contract, I mean, a permit for the house, but he never did take out a permit before he left the, he left the estate.
Okay.
He got a permit. And he lied to the, he didn't submit to a limited.
To the planning?
He lied to the limited.
To the permit department?
Yeah. And he lied to the limited ministry, said he wasn't, he wasn't really a general contractor. So they denied, they denied the payment and said we'd get together, try and get together, work this out ourselves. I don't want to talk to the man no more, because every time I talk to him, my blood pressure jumped sky high. I might have something, I don't want to do anything that I have to be, be, regret later on.
Okay.
So I don't want to talk to God.
Okay.
He, he habitual rely you.
Okay. So we're going to put you down for an extension on all three.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
For a request for an extension?
For a request for an extension.
So that council can vote for approval?
Yes.
Right. Thank you, sir.
Brandon Gidry, seventy-one ninety, Click Drive, Beaumont, Texas, item number nine.
How you doing?
How are you?
I'm just going to ask for an extension.
Item number nine.
Yes, ma'am.
Your name again, sir?
Brandon Gidry.
Brandon Gidry?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Gidry, we will put you down for a request for an extension.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So request, what does that mean?
Well, at the end of this hearing, we're going to go over every request that we have, and then we're going to take a vote.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Renita Pickens, thirty-five forty-five Dobson Road, Beaumont, Texas, item number fourteen, twenty-two forty-two Fillmore.
Good evening, council. I am here, not for thirty-five forty-five, I'm here on behalf of twenty-two forty-two Fillmore.
Right.
Which is my parents' residence. And it was, it burned due to an electrical fire, and my dad didn't want to go and secure financing, and he has the money now. The family has put together the money, and we have the contract. But when I went to obtain a permit, they said that it was on the list to be demolished. So I am here to ask for an extension. Mayor, move on.
Okay.
On that's twenty-two forty-two Fillmore.
Item number fourteen, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Item number fourteen.
Okay.
And you, and you have the finances to complete this?
Yes, we have the money. And Mr. Amato Camago will be doing the work. So as soon as you all tell me that we can get the permits and everything, we're ready to move.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Etha Ed, I think that's Eglon, twenty-six forty-five Harriet, item number sixteen.
Good afternoon. Hello. I'm Etha Eglon, and this is my partner, Carla Scott, and we are real estate investors. I'm a real estate agent. We bought these properties from a client of mine, and immediately within the next, maybe, while we were in escrow, the houses became red tag. And because we had other projects and with trying to do things cash or private money, we just kind of got some delays, but we're asking for an extension today, because we're ready to proceed with rehabbing these properties.
On both properties?
There are two houses on this lot. They share the same legal, but they're two houses. One of the houses, we're not sure, because of the way the foundation has kind of sloped in, it, when we go to do the foundation, if the house will just fall because of the way that it needs repaired. And if that's the case, we're just going to have a demo. I think Mr. Lancia said you guys could do it first at no charge, and then we'll just build another house on the back of that.
Miss Eglon, you're on Harriet?
Yes, ma'am. Twenty-six forty-five. And then there's a house on Sutherland, so we own both houses. They're just on the same lot. They are, one's a single family and one's a multifamily.
Okay. So one is green and one is white, or is this?
Yes, ma'am. The green houses on Harriet.
I didn't know if this was the same house.
Yeah, so what happened with these is that they are on the same lot. And when my previous client went to have the survey work done, because it was grandfathered in, kind of, in a sense, he never had them separated. So they're like two houses on a five thousand square foot lot. But they have separate addresses for one legal description.
Probably one in the front and one rear?
Yeah, well, one, the one on Sutherland is actually on Sutherland.
Oh, okay.
The other one is on Harriet. The lot goes all the way back.
From one street to the next?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
It's almost like they share a backyard.
They do. It's a small, it's not an alleyway per se, but.
I know where it is.
And, Mr. Scott, it doesn't make sense for us to, the plan that we have is to make the Sutherland house, keep it as a multifamily. The bottom floor is an efficiency and the top floor is a one-bedroom. And since we were born and raised in a parish church, we, we have plans to just kind of go block by block and just kind of bring some of those structures back to life and then build more houses over there.
Great.
Thank you.
Any, any questions? Yes, Councilmember Turner.
I know you said one, the foundation was pretty bad. Is it the green one or is it the white one?
It's the white one.
Okay, thank you.
And we won't know until they actually begin the work. If they go to lift it, if it crumbles, then of course, we're just going to have it just demoed and just rebuild something else.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Durya.
So are you planning on, are you, you're asking for extension, or are you planning on actually letting one of the houses get demolished and start over?
I want an extension. We won't actually know if the Sutherland house, if, if we can actually repair the foundation, because both of these houses, well, the Sutherland house is a wood house. The other one has some asbestos siding on it, so we need to replace that. But the Sutherland home, because it was a pier and beam and out on the slab, and the previous owner just kind of let it, just. previous owner just kind of let it just sit, the boards have tilted into the side and they're like in the ground. So according to the foundation company, they don't know for sure if by repairing it that it will actually crumble when they try to lift it or they can actually do it.
So you, you won't know for sure until you actually get in there and start doing the work?
Doing the actual work.
Okay, you say you're, uh, going around the parochial looking for?
More opportunities, yes, sir.
More opportunities.
Do you have any?
No, that's my ward, I don't own anything over in the parochial, but there's a lot of stuff available over there.
Well, we're interested. Can I give you my contact information?
If you, uh, are you going to stay for, till the meeting's over?
Uh, I can, yes.
I'll speak to you then.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Delancey, who's Mr. Willis, back there?
So we have one person that wanted to speak, Joseph Lewis, but he got sick and, um, was going to the hospital. Delancey was gonna maybe just speak on his behalf if that's okay with council?
Sure.
But number? I'm sorry, the address is seven twenty Jeanette, but the house is number twenty-one, seven thirty-five LaSalle.
Um, he got sick and had to go to the hospital, his alarm was starting to go numb, so he had called me back to the back burner and told him I would ask for him. He's wanting an extension for the hundred and fifty days if possible. And he is wanting to repair it, so. Usually we only do it if owners here, but never had this one happen before.
And that was who?
Number twenty-one.
Twenty-one. What's his name again?
Uh, his name is Joseph Lewis.
Say the last one?
Lewis.
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 L-E-W-I-S.
L-E-W-I-S, Lewis.
Yeah, number twenty-one, seven thirty-five East LaSalle.
Mm-hmm.
I'll let y'all make the decision on that one.
Thank you.
Uh, Frank Ralphord Jr., eighteen ten Leela, item number twenty-three.
Good evening.
Hello, Mr. Ralphord.
Uh, eighteen ten Leela, I've been doing, having some work done to it, I've received all the, uh, got the builder's permit from the city. Uh, we did foundational repair on it, we, uh, secured it, the windows, every time I secured it seems as if someone comes bust a window on the inside of the property. And I also have a, a contract on the house right now, I'm trying to sell it. And I have a buyer ready to buy the house, closing date tomorrow. If I can get the extension for it. The relatives, Mr. Tracy sitting in the back?
Okay, so?
I've already done some of the work to it, but now I'm asking for an extension so the buyer can come in and do the work and just finish the house up.
You're just going to sell it as is?
Yes.
Okay. You're going to sell it as is, but you're requesting the extension to continue and move forward with the sale?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, I'll put you down for a request for an extension, one moment.
One question, I see there's a, uh, three thousand dollars taxes owed, had you made arrangements to catch up to taxes on that place?
Yes, sir, I'm going to catch up.
You've already made arrangements with the?
No, I hadn't, I, when I was reading this, I'm going to take care, go up there today and start it.
Okay.
Any other questions? That's it? Thank you, sir.
Uh, Sandra Brooks Lee, six oh three Texas Street, Camden, Arkansas, uh, item number forty-five, seventy-six thirty-five Tram.
I'd like to first say that I'm really not familiar with the, um, codes, uh, here in Beaumont, I'm, I'm actually, uh, uh, resident of Liberty County, um, once before and now I work in, uh, Arkansas and that's where I reside at this time. But this property is, uh, belongs, uh, air, I'm an heir property to this, originally was my auntie's and she's passed and I was, I wanted, I want to save the property because my auntie went through a lot to be able to, to have that land in that, in that house and it's just like, uh, uh, memories that, um, I cherish. And what I wanted to do was, uh, actually just not to fix it up as a, a home to live in, I, I wanted to be able to, um, use it as a storage. And I noticed that, um, about three hundred feet down the road from the house, I noticed that there's storage buildings, you know, on some property that's, you know, down below from it. And I, I'm just like, I, I don't know you all's codes, but I wanted to find out why is it that I can't just, you know, have it sitting there fixed up just for a storage building? I'm not understanding, but, um, I would like to request, I really don't know what a code, um, is saying that I need to do in order to bring it up because the outside is, looks fine as far as I'm concerned, it has, uh, vinyl siding on it, I put, uh, new windows in it and so unless you just, you know, be looking all in the windows, you really can't see an issue with the house. But nevertheless, um, I, I need to find out, you know, what is it with, if you own some property, you're not allowed to put a storage building just on your land, is that a, a rule?
Counsel?
Mayor. Mayor, I can add to that. There is a, zoning ordinance does prohibit from just setting up a storage, we do have this request from time to time where people just want to turn especially dilapidated structures into storage units, whether it's for their personal goods or, or others, um, but kind of apart from the question of the storage, uh, issue, the, I guess the primary question is the state of the structure and the fact that it needs to be repaired.
So you have that picture of it right there? So I was like, what is it that you all was wanting me to do?
And we do, we do send, you should have received a notice.
I didn't.
Okay. Okay, so it may be a family member or the owner, okay, but we can get you a copy of that notice.
You said the owner is deceased?
Correct. It's heir property now. My auntie is deceased and, um, she was the only name on the property and, um, one of the, one of the acres of the four, uh, belonged to my cousin and she's now deceased, so I'm, I'm, uh, the care of the property. And so I still would like to find out, why is it that you can't have a storage building? I see one down the road that they have a storage building and on their property, so I mean, what, how do you go about, what is it, special permission?
Yeah, again, that's a zoning issue, which is a different question. The question before us today is the condition of the structure, but we can, we can definitely walk you through it.
Okay.
And mayor and council, just to point out, um, heir, heirship is not something that council, um, traditionally takes a part of it, we typically deal with the owners. Um, as she mentioned, it was her auntie's property, we don't know if there's a will involved or how many other cousins or, um, descendants that may be entitled to the property. One share of the property, like she said, if she's a true descendant of the property would, may in fact be hers, um, but there's a lot of intricacies that go, that go into that some year. Y'all can consider that today, but in terms of like paperwork and whatnot upstairs, it may become difficult. She is going to have to produce that she's a true heir to the property and has some ownership moving forward.
So I have a question, uh, does she need to have all of that resolved before we can consider her request for an extension or, or what?
Typically, yes, that's, and that's why I began with that, that's not something that you guys typically deal with, because we typically either deal with the owner or, um, someone who can, can prove ownership if, if, for example, if the property was already going through probate and they'd already did the necessary steps to do that to, to show that they were, um, that no one else was making a claim to the property, uh, so to speak. So yes, that would need to be, almost like back taxes, there would need to be some type of proof shown that, um, she is a legal heir to the property and truly entitled to, to take full ownership of the property.
And that can take a while to get that done, that process.
Depending on how many people is involved, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Ma'am, did you understand?
No.
Well, I'm, I'm.
Could you come to the podium?
If, uh, she's saying that.
Ma'am, can you come to the podium?
I heard her make the statement and I'm saying if she don't believe that I'm, you know, the one who's over the property, then maybe she, then you all should give me some proof that I'm not, you know?
When, well, it doesn't work that way, it's not the fact that she doesn't believe, you have to produce the documents showing that you are the owner of the property.
So I'm the heir, the one who's paying the taxes every year.
But again.
I don't know what else I can, what else would do require that I give you?
So typically, um, after the, the owner deceased on the property, there's typically a probate process that would go through, there, there'd be some legal documentation that would be transferring the property interest into you. Although you are the, the caretaker of the property and the, uh, the decedent or the heir that's, you know, caretaker of the property, you may have some other relatives who say that they, or believe that they are also entitled to the property. And so the probate process would eliminate any discrepancies that may be involved so that the city isn't inundated with requests and, you know, trying to resolve family issues.
So according to the, whatever that is over there, building, there is no, um, probate will that, um, is?
There is a process to probate property without a, a will. And I recommend that you.
Well, there's not anything that's reported. That, um, what it is, the city, um, took the property, my auntie did it, it's four acres, she did it one acre to my cousin and then the other three acres is heir property. And so the city chose not to divide that one acre because they said that it was improperly, um, submitted. So I have not been able to find, um, someone to fix the problem yet because I don't actually live here and I haven't, I really, I'm not a real estate person, so I really didn't know how to go about it, but today I actually got some information that can help me to fix that situation. But other than that, there is no one else. Uh, my auntie passed and all the heirs basically are deceased, so I mean, I know what you're saying, but I always say if there's nothing to say that, you know, nobody's fighting against me, then apparently I'm the only one.
So at this point, ma'am, what I would suggest is some way, somehow you will have to get legal counsel to get that property in your name so that you can present a document before anything can be done with that property. It has to be in your name.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So be, before you all, um, tear it down, can I be on the list to, uh, have more time to get the paperwork done?
You're not the owner of the property and I, that's, that's the problem. Because you're not the owner of the property, you can't make a request on something you're not the owner of.
So the owner is deceased, so who's?
Well, but you're saying that you are the heir, that you.
And I'm paying the taxes.
Well.
So mayor, we may not be able to give, and sorry, ma'am, we may not be able to give you an extension, um, through the, the city's process today because you're not the owner, but there are other legal remedies that are available to you. Um, I recommend that you speak to legal counsel to determine what those legal remedies are, but those legal remedies would prevent the city, um, from moving forward with any demolition of the property. Um, but what can't happen is that our procedures doesn't allow us to enter into an agreement with anyone that is not the owner of the property, the legal owner, let me say it that way.
So does that mean that you all are going to proceed with tearing the house down?
Unless you seek other legal remedies.
So, um, I have things inside of the house that, um, random things, so how long do I have to clean these out?
That's a process that they can discuss with you upstairs on second floor, um, but also I would recommend that you seek legal counsel to explore those other legal remedies.
Thank you.
That's all I have, mayor.
Okay. So we have items number two, number three, number fourteen, number. Number sixteen, number twenty, twenty-one, twenty-three.
Nine.
And number nine, number nine.
Forty-five?
Forty-five, she's not the owner. At this point, each one of them are requesting an extension. And so, one moment.
Um, on item number twenty-one, the one, the guy that got sick, is, is it okay for her to speak on his behalf and ask for an extension?
So he was present, um, it, so he was present because he did fill out the green slip, so it would be up to council to, if you want to give him a medical exception because he had to go to the emergency room. Little, little grace, little mercy.
The only question I have on twenty-one is making sure the, the property owner realizes there's twenty thousand dollars in the taxes due.
Twenty-one?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
So any motion that would, you would make could be contingent on him bringing the taxes current, and that is something that the council has done in the past.
And twenty-three.
I think twenty-three, twenty-three stated that he was going to make.
Today, yeah.
Arrangements for the taxes today because he has a sale for the property.
Yeah, if taxes are owed, again, we'll check that as they try to, uh, enroll in the work program if approved, so we'll make sure of that.
Okay, so. Do I need to call the numbers out again?
Yes.
Okay.
I have them. In your motion? Put in the motion, I need to make sure, you want to make the motion and do the numbers again.
Yeah, in the motion, mm-hmm.
Does everyone have the numbers?
I got the numbers.
Okay. Let, let me call the numbers out again. Okay, number two, number three, number nine, number fourteen, number sixteen, number twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-three. Correct? Correct. Okay, I'd like to make a motion that each one of these properties have requested an extension. May I have a motion, please?
I move to approve and offer extensions to two, three, twenty, nine, fourteen, sixteen, twenty-one, and twenty-three.
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. I will now close the public hearing. Thank you. Okay, at the close of the city council meeting, the council will hold an executive session to deliberate the appointment, employment, and duties of the city manager position in accordance with section five-five-one dot zero-seven-four of the government code Personnel Matters. At the closing meeting, Christopher S. Boone, Lionel D. Lines, Kenneth R. Williams. Consider matters related to contemplating or pending litigation in accordance with section five-five-one dot zero-seven-one of the government code Ronald K. Davis versus John D. Brown, ET at Civil Action Number One, Two-Two.